We will allow for in-person by council members and the public so that they can be heard, but also council members and the public can call in or email for the near future for public comment. The media and the public will always be part of the process in order to be heard, which is something we have worked so hard for the last couple of years and strive for and will continue to do. I am calling this meeting, Special Meeting of the Common Council of the City of Wausau, to order on Wednesday, March 18, 2020, at 5:30 PM. We'll start with a Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to take roll call. When I call your name, please indicate that you are here. Mr. Peckham?
Here.
Mr. Martins?
Here.
Mr. Nutting?
Here.
Mr. Neal?
Here.
Mr. Gesselman?
Here.
Mr. McElaini?
McElaini, here. Turn the names.
And you're feeling better. Cool.
Ms. Rasmussen?
Here.
Ms. Lawrence?
Here.
Ms. Herbst?
Here.
Ms. Tau? And Mr. Smith?
Here.
Okay, moving on. I would need to have a motion in a second to suspend the rules. A two-thirds vote will be required. I have a motion by Mr. Neal, a second by Mr. Nutting.
Please indicate yes, no, or abstaining when I call your name. Mr. Peckham?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mr. Nutting?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Gesselman?
Yes.
Ms. McElaini? McElaini?
McElaini.
McElaini.
Yes.
Ms. Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Herbst?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Moving on to file number 02-0432 for the city council, an ordinance to suspend the rules or to modify the rules to allow council members, excuse me, to call in for city council or committee meetings during the COVID-19 restriction period. I'll entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Rasmussen. Do I have a second by Ms. Herbst?
Again, please indicate your vote when I call your name.
Go ahead. We've got to have a discussion. Right. Go ahead, Mr. Smith.
I don't know if there's on or not. I'm disturbed by this. I think that this whole situation has been hyped by the media. Let's take a look at what happened back in 1991. Everybody remember the swine flu? That had affected on the high side of 89.3 million people caught that. And of that, on the high side, 575,000 died. I don't remember anything shutting down at that point in time. Does anybody else remember if the city council shut down or the bars and restaurants shut down? I think this is hyped. There's no way I'm going to support this. I think we have to conduct the people's business in person. We have to allow people in here to give us their input. And I think doing it with the calling in is just not called for. Thank you.
Mr. Neal.
Well, for one thing, we are acting according to recommendations like from the CDC and from the state. You know, we're a group of obviously over 10, and these are the recommendations.
City bodies were exempted from that.
They're exempted. Government bodies are exempted, but we're acting on the recommendations in spirit. I don't see any problem with it if we have a way to do our business elsewise. So.
Mrs. Rasmussen.
Thank you. First, let me say I requested these provisions, and these provisions are subject to voluntary use. No one is required to call in for a meeting, and there's no restriction that says committee members cannot come and sit in this chamber if they're comfortable doing so. Out of an abundance of caution, we don't know yet if we'll have members that are quarantined or sick. This is only at the beginning. And so, in the event that we will have quorum issues because people are under 14-day watch in their homes but showing no symptoms or showing light symptoms, if they're still capable of participating and wish to participate by phone, this would allow that to happen. So their votes would be counted, their presence would be recognized for the purpose of quorum, and their districts would remain represented even through an event like that. So passing this does not mean that, you know, come Tuesday night for finance that no one's going to be here, and it certainly doesn't mean that at the council meeting that, you know, no one is able to come and conduct their meeting in person. I will say, though, that anyone that does show up for those meetings needs to maintain social distancing and that the seating for those committee meetings and council meeting need to look like the seating looks tonight. Big spacing in between, not a foot or two. And this is not a big hype from the government. This is a worldwide pandemic. It's getting worse. And the only way we can stem the impact into our healthcare systems, we can't afford to overload every hospital in this area. We don't have enough. We don't have enough supplies, and we don't have enough doctors. So we have to do everything we can do to protect one another, to protect our families, to protect our citizens, and do whatever we can do to blunt that curve, to stave off that spike that everybody's talking about. Left unabated, coronavirus could spike overload healthcare systems like what we saw in Italy. We don't need that here. So to be responsible about how we do this, if we pass this tonight, this will allow council members who choose to to participate by phone, including council members who have to, because at some point that may need to be necessary. Now, as soon as the COVID-19 crisis is over, these provisions automatically sunset. It doesn't continue. The public will still be able to view the live stream. They'll be able to view the public access video just like they always have. The audio from the callers will be able to be heard in this room. It'll be recorded on the recordings. People will still hear what we're saying. So we're not excluding the public from our process, and we're not not doing the public's business. That said, public comment will be problematic because the way we need to be separated in this room to conduct business safely and to limit those 10-plus numbers for public comment, we should be requesting that public comment be submitted by either mail or email in advance of those meetings. The public can still dial in on the conference call number, and they can certainly listen, but there's no easy way to sort out who's speaking and who's not in a conference call environment when you have the public lined up on the call. So I would say that members of the public that choose to call in to listen to the activity are doing that. They're listening to the activity. But active participation is going to have to happen, at least in the short term, using email or mail. I think that's the only efficient way for us to do it. So I would recommend that we pass this tonight, and that the first meeting that gets to use it is Tuesday's finance meeting and Tuesday's council meeting. Thank you.
Ms. Lawrence.
Thank you, Mayor. Are we saying then that the public will not be allowed into these meetings?
No.
That's what I thought you just said.
When I read the memo that Chris Shuck put out about ED when they thought about going virtual, he indicated that based on the spacing necessary in this room, that they would not admit the public face-to-face.
Right. I think we have to make that decision, and I'm really not supportive of banning the public from our meetings because we don't have any more six-foot spaces. I mean, life is a risk. I mean, I felt like you did, Dennis, up until about two weeks ago, and now, you know, you can see all the flattening, the curve stuff. Everybody kind of needs to get on board with this, or none of it's effective. But in terms of not allowing the public to our meetings, I have a problem with that.
It's not the case.
But that's what... You're saying the public can email, can come in, but they can still attend the meeting?
Yes.
Okay. We need to make that clear.
We need to be clear that they are certainly encouraged not to for their own safety.
We're going to be putting up signs and stuff like that on the outside. If you're sick, don't come in. This is a public building, and it needs to be utilized as such.
Well, the other option, though, is to put up a view screen out in the lobby. I don't know what you do, but you have to contain the numbers of people that sit in this room when we're all together, or all of this is for nothing.
Well, I really stand opposed to that. I think that this is an open meetings, and those doors are open, and we invite the citizens of the city of Wausau to come in at any given time in any given committee, at any given city council meeting. That's what we're here, and we're here to listen to them. And I think that we cannot... If we go down that slope, I think that's really, really not serving our citizens very well, and I would be opposed to that. I think that if we can scatter in this room, that's what this room is for. And if people are ill, they should stay... Naturally, they should stay away. But I feel that in essence of this city council and the city, we need to have an open city council. And a question about the technology, will the people out there and even here know what is being said? Will it be broadcast within the room itself, I trust?
Yes.
Yes.
So that everybody, even the people dialing in, will be able to hear what all the communication is into the city council.
Correct.
Mayor, may I make a comment at this point?
Go ahead, please.
I won't launch into anything, Mr. Neal, while you're standing there, but the one thing I do want to point out is that there may be exceptions going forward if you approve these rules to this remote technology appearance and participation, depending on the agenda items on each committee or council agenda, because the open meetings law requires that they be reasonably accessible. And if, for whatever reason, you've got a presentation with charts and maps and architectural drawings and all kinds of things that the public's not going to be able to see over the telephone, or you've got, you know, a witness or a public hearing or somebody coming forward whose credibility or whatever can't be judged because the person's appearing by telephone, then it's questionable whether that is reasonably accessible at that point. And so there really, these agendas, it's going to be my advice, be reviewed on a case-by-case basis for the items that appear there on to make sure that they can be presented in a way that keeps them reasonably accessible to the public with the agenda items on that agenda. Does that make sense?
Mr. Neal.
Yeah, just a question. Is this to be decided by a simple majority or a two-thirds?
Two-thirds.
Okay. That would be eight votes.
Correct. Can I say something?
Mr. Peckham.
Yeah, thank you. I do think that we are going to be able to make adequate provisions for media coverage and for public participation. It may be a little awkward. There were days when you couldn't speak at a meeting like this, and we've loosened that up and made a lot better provisions, I think, in the last eight or 10 years. And I do really like the fact that as soon as the public health emergency goes away, this goes away. So I think in light of this emergency situation, we should approve this.
Ms. Lawrence.
Just a correction. We've had public comments since at least 1998, just so you know. It's nothing new.
But it was at the tail end of the meeting?
No. It was very adequate public comment.
Yeah.
I would ask if we have any agenda item where we expect people... I mean, could we have... I'd like your idea. There's that monitor out there. If we had to, we could put chairs out there.
Yes.
And, you know, I'm sure we can work something out so we're totally accessible.
I kind of think the meeting is being lost, and I understand the concern. Again, the public is invited. They have the right to be here. But the technology is if they call in or email or text or whatever way that they're heard. We're not saying the public can't come in. Not... I wouldn't allow that to happen. But we also got to use some common sense, and we've got some things going on. It is a different... It's never happened before, so we're in the process of learning this right now, too. But no, not for one second do I want to have it. The public is not involved in the process, as I said at the beginning of the meeting. Ms. Miller? Go ahead, Mr. Gesselman. I'm sorry.
Well, thank you for that, Mr. Mayor, because I'm concerned about that. I think at a variety of meetings, for instance, at meetings where we're talking about neighborhood issues, I think I want to hear what the neighborhood is saying, people of the neighborhood, and I invite them up to speak. And I think that this is what our job is here, is to listen to the citizens. If they communicate to us with email, however, fine, but I think we also have to give them that further option of coming here and talking to their representatives who are going to be making decisions that may be affecting their lives.
Agreed. Ms. Miller.
Judith Miller, 903 Kickbush Street. Thanks for allowing me to speak. A couple of things you need to be aware of. You can be asymptomatic and be carrying the coronavirus. The incubation period is two to 14 days. You can go 13 days, show no symptoms, and you can still be carrying it. I hate to bring this matter up, but if you are not aware of it, age factors into this. Anyone over 60 is considered more vulnerable than anyone else. I will not discuss the age of various council members, but I would like to see you protected and the public protected. You need to consider that in having the public in. Yes, we need a way to call in, to email you, to talk to you, but again, this is dangerous and can be fatal to certain people. There is no cure. There is no vaccine. There's nothing you can do when you get it, except wind up in the hospital if you're seriously ill, and they can try to hydrate you. Please consider that.
Thank you. Mr. Neal.
Thanks again. You know, there are recommendations for minimum distance between people. We know that. It's just like six feet. You know, to address the concerns about, you know, public access, you know, in person here, perhaps we consider that anybody who has registered for public comment, you know, be allowed in. We can even, you know, as I saw in a news clip last night, it might have been at the warming center where...
Right.
I'm sorry?
Warming center.
Yeah, the warming center, where chairs were lined up where this chair is open, these two are taped off, the next chair is open, these two are taped off. We can then determine what our limit is for people in this room. But if we did that, first come, first served for available seats and people that have registered for public comment, then we've pretty much covered the concerns voiced with a reasonable degree of safety. But we need to, you know, as Ms. Miller has said, we need to consider the very valid health-related concerns that are real and not something that we can debate about or say is a media frenzy. This is worldwide, and it's coming from experts, you know, which none of us are. So I think we have to take it to heart and act accordingly.
Mr. Martins.
Thank you. I have so much excellent discussion here, and I know that I have been, you know, considering this issue over the last, you know, couple of days as we've been presented with it. And I see two opposing points here. One is we do have to keep the public accessible and available, and we need our meetings to be open and viewable by the greater public. And I see it's heartening that this room will still be available so those that want to attend in a public setting can, you know, if that's the case, can be in a public setting and interact in a public setting. But also, I think we cannot dismiss the potential, you know, what's at stake here in what COVID-19 can present to us. As Ms. Miller said, that you can be asymptomatic. There could be people here that could be carrying it. We don't know. Age and other issues can play deeply into, you know, its effects on a person. And if there's anybody here that, you know, is... has to be isolated for any reason whatsoever, you know, then it creates a problem with quorum, as Alder Rasmussen said. It creates a problem with, you know, the city being able to govern itself. And we need to keep our, you know, as elected officials, we need to keep ourselves safe, too, so that we can be able to do the city's work. And if it means that, given, you know, the ability to remote in for a meeting, we need to have that ability. If we need to look at social distancing in this room or in the lobby, we need to consider that, too, so that we can balance the needs of the public and the needs to keep the city's business moving forward.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Neal.
I don't mean to be hogging the mic or anything, but with all of Tau's absence tonight, you know, we cannot afford to have, you know, up to three people on council, for whatever reason, oppose this, because that would be the height of irresponsibility, as far as I'm concerned. Sure, there's concerns. There's idealistic concerns, but we have very real factual concerns that I think have to rise above, you know, well, what I wish we could do. It'd be irresponsible to vote against this issue at this time. This is a de facto declared emergency, and as such, it requires due diligence and action. We cannot take it lightly. Thank you.
Mr. Klein?
Do you want me to talk a little bit about...
Sure. I'm sorry. While you're coming up, I'm going to ask Mr. Smith to speak.
Mr. Neal, it is becoming tiresome, you trying to influence how people vote. I have a vote. You have a vote. I don't tell you how to vote. You shouldn't tell me how to vote. It is tiresome, is annoying, and I would like to see it stopped.
It's advice.
Go ahead, Jerry. Thank you.
So what I'd like to do is just talk a little bit about what technology we would likely use where you do approve this. And most of what I'm going to talk about is really to protect the council members. So what I would expect to do is have everyone have your iPads charged up before the meeting, long before the meeting. Check your email for an email from the person that's scheduling the meeting, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. But let's say Leslie sets the meetings up. You're going to get an invite... You're going to get an invitation to the meeting, and it's going to have a big green button on it that says "Join Meeting." So when the meeting's ready to start, you go on your iPad, go into that email for that one, click on "Join Meeting," and it's going to launch an app called WebX Meet, which most of you should already have seen on your iPad. If anyone hasn't, let me know. And it's going to launch WebX Meeting. It's going to ask you, "Do you want to view this in WebX Meeting?" You need to say yes, and then you'll join the meeting. Someone up front... I'll just use the example of regular council meeting. Leslie's running the meeting. She's going to have... She's going to start the meeting. You guys are going to join it. On the right hand of her screen, she's going to see all of your names, as long as all of you are using the WebX app. If someone decides to dial in, all she's going to see is caller number two or caller number three. So hopefully, all of you have internet access that want to come in remotely, have internet access at home. And it'll be a much better experience if you're on your home internet connection and you're using the WebX app. I would expect you to mute yourself whenever you're not needed to talk. And if you want to have us when you do talk, if you want us to see your face, that's fine. You'll need to turn the video on. It's not default on, so you'll... There's an icon on the bottom for your microphone. That's how you mute yourself, and there's an icon for your video. If you're using that app, Leslie is going to be able to control you speaking, so she can actually mute you, and then you can unmute yourself. So if there's too many people talking, and the mayor says, "Mute everybody," you can do that, and then you can unmute yourself. That'll give her a chance to do that. The way that I would expect to handle talking is if you have the app up, there's an icon on the bottom for chatting. So you can... I don't know if any of you have used the WebX or Zoom or any of those products. If you chat, it sends a message to the host that said, "I'd like to speak," or "I'd like to ask a question." You guys, it's up to you how you want to handle that. You could have the mayor or whoever's running the meeting read the question, or you could open it up for the mic for that person to talk, and however you want to do it. So let me just make sure I wrote down a bunch of notes for you. Let me make sure I covered them all. So I want to make sure that you have your iPad charged, that you have that app installed. You might want to do a little practice run, right? You'll get an email invite. So when you're ready to go to the meeting, you need to open up your email, click on the join... Click on the email and hit the join button. We'll do a little practice with the chat, teach everyone how to do that, because that's takes... You know, you have to make sure you have the right icon. Leslie needs some practice with it as well, because she hasn't done this yet, so we need to make sure that works. The public would likely have three choices in my mind listening to your conversation. One, they'd be able to come into the room and listen in the room and speak. Number two, the meeting invite is going to have an 800 number, or not an 800 number, but it's going to have a call-in number and a meeting ID, and they can call in. They're going to... Again, if 10 of them call in, it's just going to say, "Meeting caller number 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10." She's not going to see their names like she's going to see all of yours. She's going to likely mute all those if you're not in a period where you want them to talk. It's very chaotic if they don't mute themselves, so you're going to probably want to handle the meeting by having her mute anybody whose name she doesn't have on there. I talked to Chris Berg. Chris would be... Remember, we already feed video to everybody at home. You can watch all of our meetings live two different ways. You can go to the website and the Public Access Television website and click on "Live Current Live Meeting" and watch a live feed on there. And you can also, if you have a charger cable television, go to a channel, I think it's 981. I hate to speak wrong, but I think that's right.
You're right.
I would suggest that what you do if you're going to do this, you put those kinds... that kind of information in the meeting agendas. If you want to be in person, you can. You'll have to have the social distancing. If you want to dial in and listen and listen only, here's the number. If you want to watch it on live video, use either the cable television or the internet connection. So you'd have five different ways that people could participate besides yourselves. Does that kind of make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Couple more things. If you don't want us to see you, you can control that. There's a camera-looking symbol on the bottom. You can just turn it off. And then when you chat and say, "Hey, you know, I'm councilperson Lawrence. I'd like to speak," you chat that. She sees it, and she tells the mayor, you know, "I have a request to speak." Then we don't unmute you, or you could unmute yourself. You can talk if you want. If you want us to see you, you can do that. In order to have the viewing side, to see everyone's faces, we don't have a good setup in here to that. We have a screen that comes down there in that projector. It's too low of resolution to really do that well. So what I would suggest is that we hang a TV on the back wall, a big one, like a 60-inch, on that back wall that we would tie to a feed that would show the WebX. But I won't have that ready for Tuesday. But if we're going to do this for two months, we probably want to do that. I have a rolling cart that holds a big TV, but I'd have to order the TV and get it mounted. So I probably couldn't have that all set up elegantly for Tuesday, but we could maybe have that a week or two later, perhaps. So that would be an option for watching people. And then, let's see. Let's make sure I got everything on here. I'm a little concerned about teaching people to run the meetings. So, I mean, I know that Leslie needs to know how to run the council chambers, but typically all of the committee meetings have a different staff person running the meeting. I'm not super excited about trying to teach five people how to do this, or six people. I don't know how many committee meetings you have. It would be helpful to the staff if, in this period of time we're doing this, that we have one or two people that is here to run all the meetings, the WebX side of it. It takes some practice. I just spent last... I was at city council or county board last night, working with them, and they're going to do another one tomorrow night. It's not something I can teach five, six people and have them all consistently do well. So if you're going to approve this, I would recommend that you identify two staff people and that every committee meeting and staff meeting is one of the two of them are there, and I can work on training them to do that. It's just not going to be a good experience if I have a whole bunch of different people trying to do that. One person's not going to know how to unmute somebody, and somebody else is not going to know how to do the chat. It's not going to be easy to handle. Questions? Yes, sir.
If we're going to attend the meeting physically, do we have to turn on this web thing?
Yeah, do anything.
Okay.
Sit down. Yep. It's just for, you know, especially, I think, one of the examples that someone gave, I think, is a really good one. What if somebody gets quarantined, they're perfectly healthy, but they want to participate? This would be a good solution for that. Yes, sir. Mayor, can I?
Go ahead.
Turn it over. Thank you.
Go with the flow.
Would it be conceivable, then, that the committee chair would be here with the smattering of people and the majority or the entire...
You're going to probably have a better experience if someone's physically in the room calling on people. That's going to be really hard to do if the room is completely empty. So it would be wise, and, you know, you could... I think you guys can delegate that. I think you have authority to do that, right? Let's say it's a committee meeting, and you're the committee chair, but you're quarantined. Can't you ask someone else kind of run the meeting, but you're joined in by WebEx?
Vice Chair.
Vice Chair, okay. You're probably going to have a better experience if you have at least the chair or vice chair at each meeting physically.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not saying it can't be done bad, but you're going to have a better experience.
Any other questions or comments from council members or the public? I will add one little thing, and I would agree with Mr. Smith. Up until last Friday, I, too, kind of thought like he had, but just seeing the way things have gone here the last couple of days, it really is unprecedented with the president, with the governor, and everybody else involved, the World Health Organization. I want to make it where we're all calm and patient and positive, because we'll get through this together. But we are all in this together, and these are different times. It's never happened before in our lifetime, and hopefully never will. My little two cents.
Okay, so we are ready to vote. I will call your name again, and please indicate your vote. Mr. Peckham? Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mr. Nutting?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Gusselman?
Yes.
Ms. McElany?
Yes.
Ms. Rasmussen?